I now call the East Line Zoning Commission regular meeting of November 17th, 2022 to order. It is 7:30. Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible).
Good evening, everybody. Roll call. Terrence P., I am here. Mr. Dwyer.
Hey.
Terry Granatek.
Present.
Debbie Jett-Harris is not with us. Norm Peck.
Yep.
Anne Thurlow. It's nice and warm in Aruba. Mr. Ginsburg is here. Denise Markovitz and Mr. Schmidt is not with us.
No.
Mr. Mahalan.
Here.
Mrs. Hardy. And Sue Spain cannot be with us tonight. She is overwhelmed. Public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. I believe we can... There's no one here to speak on that. There is no public hearing tonight, so we move on to the regular meeting. First item on that is the 2023 East Line Zoning Commission proposed meeting calendar. I believe everyone has that. Take a look at it. Is it something to where we may want to think about maybe making the meetings earlier at 7:00 PM?
We have talked about that off and on for years and we never quite got there. It's up to you as a commission on fine with whatever you choose to do.
Personally, I loved the idea.
Seven?
6:30.
That's up to you guys.
I mean, we are, like, I believe, if not the only, one of the very few that are at 7:30. And as everyone knows, some of the time our meetings can last a quite a long time. Myself, I'm also in favor of going to 7 o'clock.
I'm opposed to it.
I brought it up before. Okay?
No.
Okay.
Look, I like the 7:30. I like the time.
Okay. How about 5:30?
No, I'm sorry. (Laughter). Why don't you sit in here and have a...
Yeah. Mr. Ginsburg?
I think I would prefer seven. It's confusing to remember, especially if you're involved in more than one board or commission. You know, the summer's seven and this one's 7:30. So I like seven.
Mr. Granatek?
I agree. Seven is a little more appropriate. Makes more sense.
Mr. Peck?
I kind of like 7:30. Been 7:30 for a long time. Everybody's used to 7:30. We have aquifer meetings also sometimes at 7:00. If we have our meeting at 7:00 and we now have to have the aquifer at 6:30, that's a little early for me personally.
I could always have the aquifer at 7:00.
If there's a serious reason to change, let me know.
Again, it's just a suggestion on my behalf. Mr. Mahalan, any thoughts?
It's up to you. This is one that's completely up to you. I'm staff. I can do whatever you choose. I'll be there.
Nice way out of it.
I mean, is it something to where we should have the full commission here before we could bring it up again, or?
Well, I've got... I would have to put this off because I've got to file it with the state at some point. And so we're hoping to get it approved tonight because our next meeting is December 1, I believe. And we probably... I forgot what the statute is, but we need to get that in.
By January?
Yeah, so I could do it at the December meeting if that's the preference of the commission, if you want to think about it. As Mr. Peck has pointed out, we've been doing it at 7:30 for, I think it's been 30 or 40 years. But it's certainly up to the commission with whatever time you choose.
I mean, I just...
It's all right or wrong. It's a...
Correct. For myself personally, I mean, it's one of these things to where, like, when we do, granted, you know, this season... Season has been light, but there are times to where we will have more in-depth meetings.
I have some things in the wings. Let me just say this about that very briefly. We've had a little bit of a lull this year at the commission, though, in the office. We have a no-while. We're very busy, but you are... This is just an anomaly. It's coming. It's in the wings. I've got a few lined up, and I think I'm giving a bigger application this week.
All right. And then also to address Mr. Peck's point, too, I mean, the aquifer, we meet maybe twice, three times a year?
I think it was only once last year, wasn't it?
No, it was only one...
Generally, I think it's...
Three to three. And that's because of the system that's been put in place by the state. We only have 16 or 18 businesses that are affected by the application currently that are in aquifers. So it's essentially about the new stuff coming in. And of course, when they come at my level, it's, well, you're in an aquifer explaining how you would eat the coat. Oh, that's right, you can't, so you can't come in.
Yeah.
But yeah, so that's kind of why it's not necessary to meet a lot. Other towns have a lot more businesses than we do, and it becomes necessary to have more staff, with more time. There's all kinds of things. So we don't need to meet frequently, because it's essentially a business registration for the existing businesses.
So, I mean, as I said, for personally, I mean, I would like to see it moved to 7:00. I mean, is this something to where we need to make a motion on, or can we just amend this?
Why don't we follow the order of the... You've got something discussed about this. It should be at the end of the meeting.
No, this is what we're talking about.
It's on the agenda. Well, it's the regular meeting.
It's number one agenda.
Public hearing.
No, regular meeting.
The East Line zoning giving a meeting, Charlie.
(Inaudible) decided to talk about 10:00. We probably should have a motion to make the change, in my opinion, so that everybody can have a voice and have an opinion. It's up to y'all if you choose to do it.
But would it be fair, seeing that the whole commission is not here, alternates and regular members?
We could potentially do it the next meeting and put it out there that we're thinking about it.
All right. Is there... What would be the reason? Is there a serious reason to change?
Because of mold.
I mean, I'm happy to change if there's a reason.
I'm just thinking about when we do have one of these meetings that goes on and on. Granted, it only happens a couple of times a year, but it sounds like it could happen with more frequency. And my thought is if we're having an aquifer meeting, maybe we still meet at 7:00 and have our regular meeting at 7:30 immediately following.
I think that's something we could deal with at 6:00 or 7:00. If we work out, because there's usually not many meetings, the aquifer stuff.
Addressing your question.
You'd have to notify the public.
If we do that, and all of a sudden people are expecting to show up at 7:00 and we're having an aquifer meeting, and now we're starting at 7:30, considering some of these attorneys that charge us $300 an hour, I'm a little... You know?
That addressing the aquifer point, right.
Yeah. I mean, if we're only aquifer having a meeting three times a year, maybe 6:30 we could do it. But my thought is maybe we should wait until the next meeting and let everybody on the board know that we're thinking about it.
All right. I agree.
And not to address yours, I mean, I... Just all the other commissions, myself, it would be more convenient for myself in terms of 7:00 in those long meetings, stuff like that. It's just a suggestion on my behalf. It is totally up to the commission on what they'd like to do. So... As for the dates on there, I don't have any problem with the dates whatsoever. Are all the dates okay with everybody on that? I noticed one year we had it on St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, but we took that into consideration.
We're having it on my birthday. We're having it on my birthday this year, and it's a big one.
Other than that, so we should be okay with the date, because it does have to be filed no later than December 31st. Is that correct? Yes. So, yeah, as long as we get it done by the 31st. So everyone's okay with having the next meeting on that, so we can have more members?
Put it on the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mahalan. Moving on. Number two, the approval of the minutes of September 15th, 2022. Need a motion to either approve or deny the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
(Inaudible).
Thank you, Ms. Markovitz. Thank you, Terry. All those in favor? Aye. Against? I'm staying. Motion carries. Six, zero, zero. Moving on. Old business, we have none. New business. Any business on the floor, if any, by the majority of the vote of the commission? Seeing we have none. Mr. Mahalan?
You were starting to get busy again. We've been through a lot of several different groups that are looking at different real estate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how many will come forward with an actual project. I'm aware of two significant ones. I believe they will come to the commission level. We're in discussion with a number of people. I was going to say, group of Bay Harbor discussions more appropriate. And I think we'll be a little bit busier. I think once the economy settles down, East Line's still hot. As you know, SIS opening, it's a line every day, all day. I think we're going to continue to be that way in East Line. We've got about seven businesses that have opened in our opening in the last few weeks, and I think pretty good for us as a small community. And I mean, yesterday with another group that's also been a small shop, but it's another business. So I think it's a sign of the economy. Actually, I have... I think I'm working with three small businesses that are looking to come in in various locations. So there's still a lot of interest. And of course, the state's going to start to spring with that, the actual work on the bridge. Find another way to go back and forth.
It actually looks nice and opened up now.
Doesn't it look nice?
It looks nice.
Too bad it can't stay that way.
There's sort of things we've talked about with them over the last few years. I mean, we've... I've been up at DOT and Newton a few times in discussions on this project, and I think we're going to get a real decent project. I mean, I pushed real hard on my side for the bridge of buttons. It's supposed to be dry stacked, so we're looking to push hard for that. They finally agreed. They've run into Lancelteck Architects. So we're hoping that in the end, we've... My position was, hey, I can have a fair bill coming. You do this all over. What's wrong with us? Why don't we get straight under the concrete? You could do better here as well.
It's the busiest stretch, busiest stretch of highway.
Sort of way to stop this and advocate kind of thing. And so I'm hopeful, and I think so far it's gotten the shape up pretty well. We're hopeful that in the end. We have the car wash is going to be rebuilt. I expect that application in a day. I was out there with our engineer and their engineer and our wetlands guy. And one of the things we were interested in was a crosswalk at Industrial Park Road. But this is a private developer. It's not a sound production. What we concluded is the state should have included it in its DOT project, which they did not. Gary had sent them an email, and they kind of said in a way. And I think the next day I sent them one, but I've been involved a lot longer than I initially.
You know what to say.
And they replied, yes, we'll take care of it. It's an oversight that needs to be done. And it was public safety issue, so we made some progress there. So as part of that project, we'll get that in, because you can't cross Industrial Park Road. That side walk area is just impossible. I've been there walking and couldn't do it. So that's something that's going to get addressed. So I think that old corridor is going to get cleaned up nicely. And then we'll see what happens in the rest of the Gateway acreage, because that's a play. Some inquiries have actually had at least two groups that wanted to do a national drug stop.
In Gateway?
Yeah. Something guy wasn't very fond of that idea unless I showed him. It's not something to write a little down. But the phone rings, there are people interested in doing all kinds of things. Some are probably less desirable projects from a community point of view, and some are just normal business. The land that's left, a lot of it is not the best. It's more difficult to develop. Now, that 156 corridor, it's some pretty poor property. There's a lot of wetlands. They've done in depressions and low topographical areas. They'll be difficult to beautify, but can be done. So the phone rings constantly. And so, you know, some of that's now going to start rising above. Landmark is threatening to come back. And that was...
5:30.
Yeah, that was a few months ago. I don't... And I probably shouldn't use that term. But he may come back for something else. I'm not sure what's going on with that. You know, we've still got that litigation going, and a couple of cases. The private, not private, Clubhouse project is underway. The Rockin' Neck Pillars, I reissued the last CO for Clubhouse after a long, arguably one-year battle with a developer trying to clean up the miscellaneous. We actually had to turn it over to the town attorney to finish, because we were no longer comfortable dealing with the developer. And I wasn't the only one who was willing to do this. With water and sewer, it was a riding staff that we had to turn it over to the attorney, said, you handle the rest of it. Talked with your attorney, let us know. Here's our list. So that finally got done. There's still a couple outstanding things. I didn't want to issue the CO because I was trying to be helpful to water and sewer, but legally I didn't have a choice, because their issues separate from what my responsibility was. But I think they're pretty close to the legal system. So that's gotten done. The project down in the Boston Post Road, remember the 18 units that are senior housing? They've done a lot of work. They've got the pipe spent a little bit getting ready to get in the ground. At exit 75, they're coming along. They're really moving now. A lot of people on that site. That's getting done. The SIP building, I should call it the Morton, they're still working, but inside finishing out the interiors. But the rest of it can't open, because they are short on some electrical connections that they're waiting on the power company to deliver.
The whole country.
Yeah, it's a state issue. And they're probably... I mean, they're probably not happy, because they can't get COs for the rest of the building until that's resolved. And it's outside our control and their control. So that continues. And I'll some probably will be looking at a couple of things.
That's fine.
We're moving along.
Very good. Okay. Moving on to sub... Excuse me, subcommittees. Architectural Design Review Regulations CA Commercial Zone.
I'm just going to pass this out. It's sort of a progress. I don't need to discuss it. It's really going to be based on what we did downtown, but once I got into it for the CA zone, it's more complex than I thought. And after talking to some attorneys out of Summer, I wanted to add some additional standards, not only to the CA, but the CV, too. We talked about that at some point. But this is pretty much what we have in the CV zone. Couple that kind of explains what's kind of cooking, and you're looking at contractors, or I'm looking at builders. And I just want to make sure that we tighten this up, because when you do the architecture review, I'm going to have a building coming in, and I'm going to need to do that with. And it's not a personal opinion. It's not what your tastes are. It's not what... You like green, and I like blue, and he likes orange. That's all off the table. We meet the standards, you get the permit. So it's more like, I've got to put some more standards in.
Part 17th meeting. Did we meet on?
I think that was last year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but then I want to...
I was here.
Yeah. I know. I was like, I was just going to take it out and go with it.
Early days.
So this is kind of progress. I'm getting at...
Yeah, it's a lot more, a lot more entailed.
Yeah, it's... Once you start getting into it and you start saying, okay, what would the legal challenges be? And the bottom line is to protect us legally, and then try to get more quality design as well. Which I think we're already beginning, depending on, you know, whether you like some of this stuff or not. And, you know, we're not going to please everybody. And, you know, and remember, it's all driven by business, and the developer's driven by its costs. You know, so we say, hey, downtown Manic, everybody's got a C V chase, they're like corner boys, and every developer when you bring that up just rolls their eyes, because that's very expensive. And so, you know, maybe it's time for us to go to the next level. Those are things we'll talk about in the future, but progress report for now.
And so the... The... Excuse me, the bulk is in here, too?
Yeah.
This bulk combined into one?
This is based on the CV stuff. As I got into, I found that I'm going to have to make some changes to the CA.
So these two are both combined in this thing? Okay. All right. No, just for me.
The bulk stuff that we're getting to, I want to make sure it was on the agenda, because we need to get to that as well. So that's kind of where we sit on the subcommittee stuff.
The committee on the downtown Manic Association has not been ready yet. Guilty, you might have enough time to think about this one. But we will get at it.
I've been thinking about it, so I'm sure you have. So we'll get together and...
Yeah, because you have what we brought up. Just some sort of guidelines. And obviously, it's not as easy as we thought.
Yeah, it is. And I made sure I put it on the agenda, so it just kind of wakes us all that, hey, here's the subcommittee stuff. You know, traditionally, we've always carried our subcommittees on the agenda. It's important to do that. Because we may not have a lot of applications, doesn't mean we're not busy, you know, at the commission level. And I think it's just a, you know, national economy, the national food alone, all of those kinds of things. They're still pulling money around investors. They're still looking, you know, borrowing questions, obviously going up, but some of the big developers, doesn't affect them. And I'll just share one other thing. We've had somebody on the line for the Morton house, and it didn't quite work out. But, you know, to have interest in that and that some black people come in was significantly different than what we've seen over the last few years. So there's... And in my opinion, the... Some of the developers that are coming in and the investors are at a different level than what we've seen in the past, maybe the parts, money investment, in my opinion. So we'll see what happens if we move her along. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalan. Ex officio, Ms. Hardy.
Well, obviously, there are a lot of meetings that go on in town, so I will try to summarize some of the things that I think would be of particular interest to the board. We did last night meet at... This is Thursday. Yes, we met last night, and we heard a presentation, an update from the SCORE Group, which is talking about equity versus equality, and a lot of the issues that are arising around that. We've been asked twice before to sign on to the pledge that racism is a public health crisis, and we have not done that, and continue to have some discussion about the significance of that and what it would really entail. The big discussion was equity versus equality, and a lot of split opinions on that. That is available, I think it's posted now online, if anyone's interested in following that. But it was an hour-long discussion and no decisions made. I think in light of our just recent presentation by our zoning enforcement officer, the Dominion Building, there's been... Parks and Rec has come forward and would like to have the town maintain that property and try to do some things with that property that would be community-minded. Dominion is waiting, is willing to give us an extension on the decision, but the idea that has a lot of support is to have something that would keep the waterfront open and available to the public, as opposed to having a three-story cardboard box in there blocking the view, to be blunt. So we have a group that's working on that, and Parks and Rec has asked to be combined with the youth services and to have that be, and have that be under the domain of Parks and Rec. There was a comment made at the last Charter Revision Commission meeting, which I was not able to attend. On the charge for the charter revision was the idea of combining planning and zoning, which I was opposed to. And however, that was on the agenda. I was opposed, because two previous charter revision commissions have had that on the agenda as well, and it was defeated both times. I... At that meeting, it was stated that the only reason that was on the agenda was because I had requested it. I did not request it. I'm opposed to it. I think that this is... It's just, it would just be too overwhelming. And, you know, we have our Blight Ordinance for zoning to handle. We have other things, and we have one person. And to combine planning and zoning, I just don't think would serve the best interests of the town. So I don't know who came up with the idea that I... That I supported that, or I asked to have it put on the charge. I did not. And I think it would be disastrous. I don't think that's going to go very far. The Hathaway property, which there's been a lot of discussion about, an acquisition, possible acquisition of that, that is now in the hands of legal departments. Both sides have attorneys, and it's been very difficult for the board to get the proper information and maps that we should have in order to make a valid decision. And it is not the entire Hathaway property. It is only one section, and this is a section that has, that's right down to the lakefront, has wetlands, and that's what's being offered to the town.
Did anyone ever bring up that we had a gravel permit on our property before it had been 10 years, and they took out much of the best soils? That was, that has to be 25 years ago.
Right. So the larger part of that property would be for development, and as this is now in the hands of the attorneys, I am not going to say more publicly. But I think that this is something that the public's going to want to keep an eye on. And obviously, the Board of Selectmen is not going to be, go any further with this if we cannot get the appropriate information that we should have, including accurate maps, which have not been made available to us. And I think also there is the problem that the land trust put up the portion of the Osobogachi Hills property as collateral to pay for that, and then to have the town paid back. And that's something that's very troublesome.
How could that possibly be approved?
In light of the name of a potential developer that was just mentioned in Mr. Mahalan's report.
I don't know how that happened.
Neither do we. Again, in the hands of the attorneys.
Yeah.
Deed reviews, deed restrictions, and small group of individuals involved in that transaction. So you're going to have a... Going to have some big projects coming before you, and we're going to be spending a lot more, the town, on legal bills. I think we live in a, we live in a great town. I think your board in particular has tried very hard to set up standards for the type of development and the type of buildings that we would like to see. And I think when presentations are made to this board, that we need to hold the developers to what they promised. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any idea where the idea of combining planning and zoning came from?
That has been on two previous Charter Revision Commission agendas, and it has been voted down both times. This appeared on a list that the board was given, and...
Mr. Ginsburg does it on the board, just for clarification.
Yeah.
On the commission, yeah, the...
And so I asked that that be removed when the charge was given to the Board of Selectmen, because it had already been put on twice before and denied. And it remained on the list. on the list.
Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of who's supporting it, because I've not heard anyone support it.
I think it's a very poor idea, and I'm, and I'm on the record for that. I think it's an impossible idea. I mean, we can't, you know, for the job that Mr. Mulholland has, look over in Waterford, they've got three people working on that. We've got one person. Can you imagine combining planning and zoning, which would also mean that you would have to, you're not going to have a commission with fourteen people on it, so next election, some of those slots are gone, you're going to go back to a size, I, I can't imagine a commission of fourteen members trying to get anything done.
No, there was a few of us who showed up and opposed it.
And so I think that that's kind of dead in the water. On the other hand, the question of should the Conservation Commission, as it originally was, be restored? And the reason for that is that we were having a lot of applications come in, and the Conservation Commission was actually meeting until one o'clock in the morning, and that happened to be my ex officio at the time, and I said, it's illegal. You don't have an agenda for one o'clock in the morning, it's another day. But the, the meetings were going until midnight, it was ridiculous. And so it was decided to split them into two, which would be the inland wetlands and the Natural Resources Commission. But what's happened is that the National Resources Commission has no comparable position to Mr. Mulholland, they don't have anybody. They're not required, you're not required to ask for their information for anything that you do. Planning Commission isn't required to ask them for any information. Aquifer protection, so they're sitting on all of this information, there are a lot of very smart people on that commission, scientists, and nobody asks them for anything. They never appear on anybody's agenda, and they have a lot of valuable information. So at this point, I think things have changed a bit, but they just did a big report on the implication of road salt in, which would affect incoming developments, to be taken into consideration, the number of roads that are being put in, the amount of salt that's being spread. I think they have a lot of information that nobody-
That can be viable for both planning and zoning.
Yes. Yeah. So-
Any other questions for Ms. Hardy? You good? Any else, Ms. Hardy? You good?
I think I'm good.
Thank you.
I'll come back in December.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, comments from the zoning board liaison to Planning Commission. I was up for October eleventh, and I missed it, if there was one. Was there one? Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Budusor can show you in.
The next one up was Mr. Dwyer for November first. Did you happen to go to that? Did they have one?
Yeah. I don't know where.
No.
No, no.
They already had it November first.
They already had it on November first. Did you attend it? The planning? No? No? Okay. So moving on, and next up would be Mr. Ginsburg on December thirteenth, which he already mentioned. There you go. Okay. Comments from the chairman, myself, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Stay warm, and you can always eat chicken or ham.
The gentleman's, the gentleman is supposed to get stuff.
That is correct.
Not at my house.
Other than that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg, second. Thank you, Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, meeting adjourned.